I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, united as well with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so with that, we will do a quick roll call of planning commission members that are here tonight. Starting with District One.
Jason Weiner.
All right, thank you, Jason. Representing District Two, David Bentry will not be here tonight. District Three, Jason Cronin, that is myself, clearly present. District Four.
Sean Blackburn.
All right, thanks, Sean. District Five.
Mike Perrell.
All right, thanks, Mike. And then we have two at-large members. We'll start with Rich.
Rich Blenkish.
All right, thanks, and Tara. And representing our county commissioners, we have Joe Persky here. Joe basically brings comments and listens to the discussions and then brings back, brings that back to the county commissioners when they have their, their meeting as kind of representation, so. All right, with that, we will go to agenda item number one, and that's to consider a rezoning request submitted by Kathleen Oshwald of Sock Center, according to Section 4.10 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance, Number 439, to rezone approximately 5.7 acres from the R1 zoning district to the Ag-80 zoning district. The properties in the part of the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter lying northwest of State Highway 28 and east of Brickyard Road in Section Two of Sock Center Township. Property address 39198 State Highway 28, Sock Center, Minnesota. This was continued from our last meeting. I already see that Kathleen, you're up in front, so thank you there. And I don't remember if we were through the public hearing, but it sounds like there's a couple of folks here that would like to speak, so we can reopen that and jump into it if everyone's okay with that. Before we do that, let's do a quick roll call of members who visited the site. Actually, quick technical question. Since we already took that roll call, do we have to do it again? Jen, are you okay?
We should do it again, just for the record.
So, quick roll call of those that visited the site. District One, Jason?
Yes.
All right. I also did previously, I didn't go back out through this month. District Four?
Yes.
Perfect.
Everyone isn't District Four.
Oh, Mike?
Yeah.
I'll just go by names. All right, Rich?
Last month.
Yep, and then Tara.
Yeah, last month.
Very good. Joe?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, with that, let's just do a real quick re-review of the item, if that's okay, Jen. Thanks.
Yes, so this request was to rezone this 5.7 acre parcel. It's currently R1 with a home on it. They would like to go to Ag-80. And the reasoning would be if the rezoning is approved, then they would be able to operate a short-term rental. Due to the township ordinance prohibiting short-term rentals in residential zones, rezoning to Ag would facilitate that use. And the planning commission did have a lot of discussion on it last month, and ultimately ended up continuing it. Asked me to go attend a township meeting and discuss with them options for maybe ordinance amendments on their end. And so I did meet with them on July 12th, and there's a couple township board members here that can speak to it as well. But we did discuss a lot of different options, and ultimately they felt strongly they want to stick with their ordinance the way it's written, and they really support a rezoning on this. So, that is a quick synopsis.
All right, thank you. Kathleen, I know you're here if you don't mind just stating your name and address for the record again.
Okay, it's Kathleen Oshwald, 44101 Brickyard Road, Sock Center, Minnesota, 56378.
All right, very good, thank you. Anything you want to add since we met last time to?
No, I went to the meeting with the township, and they seemed very positive about it. They really would like it. I know that they weren't willing to change their ordinance like you had asked, but I'm hoping that in some way we can come to an agreement that would benefit both of us.
All right, thank you. All right, so with that, any other questions by planning commission members for the applicant or staff prior to going into the public hearing portion?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I was not here last month for this discussion, so you're, you're not actually planning on doing anything agriculturally involved on this? It's just rezoning it so that you can have a short-term rental on it because of the ordinance?
If I did, I could do agricultural tourism, so like I could have, I got an email, was it from you, Jennifer? That said what I could have on my property if I wanted, like I could have some chickens, or I could have like two goats, or I could have one cow. It was a certain amount. I would like to actually eventually have a couple of goats because the woods are really full of buckthorn, and I would like to eradicate that if I could.
Mr. Chair, if I could add on to that as well, I checked with our feedlot staff. If it were rezoned to Ag, the size of parcel would allow up to three animal units for, you know, non-domestic pets, so.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I would like to have a, like a little pumpkin patch there also, that people could come out to. I think that would be a nice addition to our town. We don't have anything like that, that I know of around, really. Tooty Fruity has it, some, I think, but that's the only one around.
Okay.
All right?
Very good, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, then we will move to the public hearing, and I know we have a couple of township members that wanted to speak, and if there's anyone else that wants to speak on this topic. We try to keep it to two minutes, just in the sake of time, but obviously, you know, that's a, that's a rough ballpark, so if you can state your name and address for the record?
I am John Basil. I live at 38171 County Road 29. I'm here representing Sock Center Township on this issue. So, anyhow, the reason we don't want VRBOs in residential, because the neighbors don't get along. I mean, it's bad out there. So, we eliminated them in the R1 and R5 districts, but then when the county came up with the rural tourism ordinances, that we left them available for the agricultural districts. We do have, there could be a dozen potential sites that are empty farms, old dairy farms. Had one gal come to me and wanted to put in grapes, orchard, and put in winery, and, and have agritourism too. So Kathy is the first one that's really come along and wanted to take, granted hers is just the old farmhouse that was part of the agricultural land there. But if you get people coming along that aren't farmers, and they might have money to build up these old houses and, and do some sort of a thing, and part of that could be agritourism, whatever. So based on her location, and that's why with the agriculture VRBOs, they're far enough away from people. You're not going to get phone calls where the neighbors are yelling and screaming at each other like we do on the lake. And it's bad enough where they're not even VRBOs where the neighbors live in R1s and get into fights back and forth about wild cats or some silly thing. So here, she is, you know, it's close to some residential housing on the lake, but most of the property is, you know, Kathy's house on the lake. We did assume, the town board did, that her property, the house, was out of the shoreline area. That she wouldn't have to go to the county for the VRBO permit. She would get that through the township. But when Jennifer was up and, and measured, of course, depending on where you measure off the lake, but apparently I suppose you should have measured in the middle. Well, it just so happens to be a, a loop in the lake that would come in far enough that Kathy's house is just barely in the shoreline area, whatever. And hopefully someday the county, there's, there's too many, and this is a separate issue, but there's too many people getting drawn into the shoreline that aren't even close to the shoreline, whatever, so if they, that could be changed would be really helpful to the townships, in my opinion, out there. But anytime somebody comes along and wants to build up one of these old farm sites, and like I say, there's probably a dozen just in our township alone that are rotting away out there, and a lot of the land has been sold off already. So when somebody does come along and wants to stick money into a building like this, and, and she doesn't have to come off Ivy 28, we said she can come off Brickyard Road, put an approach in over there, so there should be no parking issue with that or anything. And yeah, if she wants to throw in a few animals and give it that rural look and stuff, more power tour and everything. And it's just basically being reattached to the agricultural land that was part of that property at some point in time anyhow, whatever. So, and it, it depends too on whoever the owner is, kind of, is, we kind of go by what they want to do. If long as they have enough land to do it, and they're not gonna have, cause issues with the neighbors and stuff. And, and that's kind of one of the reasons too why we kind of like prefer R5s. It's a bigger lot, and houses don't have to be right on each other, but I mean, they could be, and the land could still be farmed on some of these other areas and stuff, whatever. So, the township was in favor of allowing her to be in there, and I don't think it will be any issues to the neighbors. It's, it's all woods around there as far as that goes, whatever. And so I, we don't see a, an issue with allowing the rezoning to do that, whatever. Because, I mean, if she owns all 50 acres, whether it's on R1 even, it doesn't mean it's ever going to be built up as R1 either. So, and if you go way back, the R1 has probably got put in there when we took over the county zoning ordinances. Our ordinance is back in 2001 or something, you know, Jennifer and her staff shows up and says, well, where do you want development? So you draw circles, and while at that time, yeah, on that side of the lake or across the road from the lake, you would assume that might be where development takes, would take place, whatever, but that totally depends on who the owner is. It may not ever be developed, and, and she could, you know, plant, well, plant all woods out there or something if she wanted to. So it, so I think that's all I need to say. If you have any questions, I'd sure be willing to answer any questions that you may have or, or anything.
Appreciate. Any questions anyone has?
Actually, so I'm looking up online, question for staff, and then one for the board member. For the staff, according to the county zoning, are vacation home rentals allowed in the R1?
Yes, they are.
Okay. So, if we approve this today, we're approving the conversion from the R1 to the A80 to meet the township ordinance. If we look along the shoreline, there's several properties that are also probably zoned R1 along them. If one of those properties were to come in and say, we want to be zoned A80 because we did this, would the township be okay with that?
No, because they have, most of them lots are less, probably less than an acre already. We require a minimum of one acre, so all the way around that lake, probably not as much on that side as it is on the southwest side. Those on the lake were old cabins that were turned into year-round housing on there. They don't have the acreage to be considered agricultural, you know, where, you know, she's got another 50 acres there. I don't see anybody else having any ag land there already. It's grass, basically, and trees on, on the lake, whatever. So, and, you know, I don't see anybody gonna plow up their lawn or anything to do any farming on it either with a one-acre lot. Whatever, where she's farming 50 acres already, and.
And farming the part that you actually say is
R1.
R1, and the part that is zoned ag is actually all in trees. It's, it's backwards. But I, I realize it's because it's within so many feet of the lake, correct? But there is nothing along the lake that's very large, like John just said. The largest piece of land from my understanding when we bought the property is the piece that my house sits on, on the lake, which is seven and a half acres.
Yeah, yeah, most of the houses on the other side, that's the, the whole row is the old original homeschool cottages, so they're all just on an acre.
That one was also, but it was built before and then purchased by the homeschool.
Yeah. All right.
In doing this project, a neighbor that, Cindy Trisco, that owns the property behind me, she called the other day and asked about what we were doing, because she must have gotten a letter. And she said, oh, that would be nice, and that she thinks it's a good idea. And she said that her family at one time farmed that land. And when she brought the check over, there were some old ladies there, and it was actually an Indian settlement. Native Americans settled there, and people were looking for arrowheads in, in its day. But they farmed it way back then.
Yeah. Very, it, it's a cool, cool project. I think we're all in agreement on, on that one. Any other questions for the member from the township? All right, thank you very much, appreciate it. All right. With that, is anyone else here from the public on this item that would like to speak? Okay, not seeing a rush up here.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion by Mike, I'm going to take the second by Sean to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so, public hearing is closed. Any additional discussion on this one before we go to findings of the fact?
I guess, just looking at it, and it's surrounded by residential. We've approved residential recently in the last number of months. You look at what the county's future land use map looks upon it as concentrated development in that area, and that's why we've approved the other residential areas. And when I look at the request, it seems like we're going backwards to go from residential to ag, and I understand the whole thing about promoting agricultural tourism and all of that. But when you look at what's, what the growth pattern is, a residential lot fits.
Yeah. Yeah. Jason, I'm glad you brought it up. Jason, I'm glad you brought up the question you did. That's a little bit where my head is at too, in that if someone was to buy a couple of R5s and R1s and then with intent to put vacation home rentals on it, come to the county, get it rezoned, then they would be able to have their vacation home rental. And really, all that is, is just, it's asking the county to spot zone to get around an ordinance. And that's the concern, has nothing to do with this project. I would say probably every single person on this planning commission loves the idea of your project and is in full support of it. I think the struggle is spot zoning in order to work around a township ordinance that's in place. And understand the reason that the township ordinance was put in place is because there's a lot of concerns at the local level on that. It should always be that the local government is more restrictive than the larger body of government. And so it sets a dangerous precedence if we start using the county to supersede or override or work around the, what should be taken care of at the township. And it's hard at the township levels, trust me, the local stuff is tough, but we set a really dangerous precedence going the other way.
I mean, I would like to add to that, you know, as the county planning commission, the applicant has stated they wanna build, they wanna use a short-term rental on the property. In the county zoning, that's allowed under an R1. So there would, so according to the county...
Yep.
Our zoning ordinance...
Exactly right.
They wanna do something that's allowed under our ordinance.
Yep. Great, great point, Jason, thank you.
How did it ever become an R1 to begin with, when it was always an agricultural piece?
Fair question.
How does that happen?
I don't know the answer to that, and maybe, it was probably far before our time. I don't know when it was rezoned.
Yeah, do you want me to address that?
Yeah, please do.
Sure. Yeah. The county enacted countywide zoning in 2000, April 21st of 2000. So, leading up to that adoption of the zoning ordinance, staff met with townships to develop the zoning map for every township. What do you want your township zoning to look like? Angie, do you mind sharing the zoning map? For some reason, it's not up there. There we go. So, and I wasn't working with Socks Center Township personally, but this map would have been a result of staff, county staff meeting with the township saying, what do you want zoning to be? So the end result was, R1, as you can see on the east side of the lake there, that swath of R1 is 1,000 feet from the lake. So essentially, the decision was made to just take the shoreline area, anything within 1,000 feet of the lake, and that's what became R1. And so, I know to Kathleen's point, her larger parcel she owns to the north is actually split zone, part R1, part A80. And that's partly because in developing the zoning maps, we really encourage townships to not necessarily go along parcel lines, but just think, you know, more globally, how do you want your zoning to look? And so, that's how that came to be. Yeah, and this is Socks Center's full township zoning map. They have one of the more colorful zoning maps. So obviously, a lot of thought went into it. And so like in the southwest corner, you've got the dark green is ag 160. Only one home is allowed per 160 acres. So I would presume that's the best farmland, maybe some bigger farm operations. Then the middle green is the ag 80, and then the lighter green is the A40. And then you've got, you know, the commercial along south, along Highway 71. So a lot of thought went into this map 20-some years ago.
Yep.
John maybe was on the board then even?
I was, I could comment more if you want.
(laughing).
I mean, I'd like to, but...
So maybe one way to look at it, Kathleen, is things are always changing. I mean, the dynamics of our county are changing when it comes to populations, zoning, all these things change over time. Even the present situation, had you applied for this vacation home rental last year, or you know, when you bought it right away? Again, it's allowed at the county level in the way that it's zoned, it's just because of the things that happened at the township. And that was in response to local residents that had concerns. So there's reasons, it's not like it was just an arbitrary decision made by the township. I don't wanna make it sound like that it was necessarily a bad decision, it was representing the interests of the neighbors and the residents in that area. In trying to do that, sometimes unintended consequences come with it, and this ends up being one of them. I think anybody would have been in support of your project largely because of the parcel that it is. This is one of those unintended consequences. And as a planning commission, we're in a very difficult spot if we change the guidelines we're supposed to be operating under and being consistent with zoning based on spot incidences. And I think that's the concerns you're hearing here, so. Any other discussion on this, or should we move to finding of fact?
I just wanted to have a, reiterate my position from last month, that I don't really feel it is spot zoning. I think it's just a readjusting of a failure. Rest of the property was ag, and I don't, if it was off all by itself and we were rezoning it to ag, then it would be, in my opinion, spot zoning. But since the other parts of our property are the ag, I think it's just realigning and fixing a mistake that was made in the past.
Thanks, Mike. All right, anything else?
As Jason said, what would stop somebody along the lake buying two pieces, two parcels of land and making it bigger? Isn't there some sort of a rule that you have to have so many acres, like five, and then this one would fit in it? And it also, like Mike just said, it's surrounded by ag. It was ag, it just seems like it needs to be put back together. I'm sorry, it just does. It's just sitting there hanging out. It makes perfect sense. And the fact that, I keep saying, I am the neighbors, if you look at the big picture, it is all mine. There's more people in the trailer court than there is anywhere near mine, and men in there are this far apart. It's just stupid, if you ask me. I'm sorry, but, it's harsh, but it is, it's just, it fits.
I appreciate the comments, so. All right, anything else? All right, we'll move to finding of fact. Number one is a proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance, why or why not?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, as the intent of this conversion is to install a vacation home rental, both of those uses are eligible within both ordinances. So therefore, either way we go, the desired eligible use is consistent with the ordinance.
Very good. I would agree. Thanks, Jason. Number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county? List applicable sections.
Mr. Chair, going back to number one, help me with that. So it was the proposed rezoning is consistent with the zoning ordinance as the parcel. Okay, so Jason Wienerman, were you saying it, the desired use is consistent with the proposed rezoning, or is consistent with the current zoning?
So, as I understand, vacation home rentals are unacceptable use in R1.
And ag.
And they're also unacceptable use in the A80. So, either way we go, if we approve this or not, the desire for the vacation home rental would be an eligible use.
Got it, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Angie, for clarifying that. Good. Okay, so back to number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county? List applicable sections. I, just to break the silence, according to the future land use plan map, it does not align with the future land use. This parcel is part of a concentrated development area, and it's consistent with the other rezonings we're seeing in the surrounding area going from ag to residential. There's a lot of neighboring properties that we've seen recently that are going that way. And that is consistent with kind of the future land use plan map. Does anyone see it differently? Okay, then we'll move to three. Is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, again, I would say the proposal is not, because the county does not allow vacation home rentals in the R1. So therefore, we are allowing a single property use within a region in which the overall uses are not allowed.
Thank you, Jason. Anything else on that one?
May I speak?
Unfortunately, not doing this part.
Okay.
Sorry, Kathleen. All right, number four, how has the applicant demonstrated that the standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, I think the applicant has tried to demonstrate how rural tourism or agritourism could be possible on the property as proposed.
Yep, I would agree, Tara. And also stated that other portions of the property are being used for agricultural purposes. All right, so then, number five, are any other issues pertinent to this matter? There's a variety of...
I'd just like to note that the township was in favor.
Yep. Township was in favor of rezoning, very true. We had a lot of discussion about the other rezonings that are taking place in that area in addition to the comprehensive plan. Anything else on this item? All right, with that then, a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, I recommend, I move that we recommend the board deny the request for rezoning for this application.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Okay, motion by Jason, second by Rich. So we'll do a call on that. All those in favor of recommending denial, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we have, we'll do a quick roll call on that. We had recommendations for denial, the ayes were Rich...
Yes.
Jason, Jason, and Sean, and then the nays were Tara and Mike. And then Tara and Mike, do you wanna just, quick response or comments for Joe to bring back to the county commissioners on the reasoning?
Well, my feeling is that it's not spot zoning, it's a realignment of a past mistake, and the use is allowed.
Okay, very good, thanks, Mike. How about you, Tara?
I took Mike's comments into consideration and agree with them, and the fact that I feel that it, that it wasn't going to, wasn't gonna harm anything to do it that way, so...
Yep. Fair.
I'd rather go for the landowner, so...
Yeah, no, fair. All right, so Kathleen, for the record, obviously, we are only a recommending body, so this will go to the county commissioners to make the final decision on the zoning. So they just take the comments and they'll have their work to do on this thing as well. And I actually wish you the best with this project, I hope it works out, I'm actually rooting for you, just couldn't look outside of the responsibilities, as I understand them for us as a planning commission, all right?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that'll go to the county board on August 8th.
On August 8th.
August 8th, yep.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming back twice, Kathleen. All right. With that, we'll move to agenda item number two, and that's to consider a rezoning request submitted by Victoria Pfeifer of Socks Center. I hope I pronounced that correctly. According to section 4.1 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance, number 439, to rezone approximately six acres from the ag 160 zoning district to the R10 zoning district. The property is in the part of the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter, lying east of State Highway 71 in section 22 of Socks Center Township. The property address is 40062 State Highway 71, Socks Center, Minnesota. Quick roll call of members who visited the site, we'll start with you, Jason.
Yes, I was.
All right, I also did. How about Sean?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
I visited the Pfeffer Park property.
All right. Oh, Pfeffer, thank you, sorry, Pfeffers, if I...
(laughing). But Pfeffer was a good year back in the day.
Yeah, that must have been the Freudian slip, thank you. And then Tara, how about you? All right, very good. All right.
Mr. Chair, there's been a request that the members speak directly into the microphone, please.
I think that was probably me again.
No names are being called out at this time.
Deb already warned me once, I'll move the microphone. Okay, with that, before we go to applicant introductions, we'll have Jennifer run through the staff report.
Okay, thank you. So again, this is a request to rezon six acres to the R10 zoning district. This property is actually 54 acres in total, and the western portion is already zoned residential, it's about 14 acres. Then the 40 acres to the east is zoned ag. So what they would like to do is zone the six acres that's hashed out there in yellow, if they, they'd like six acres rezoned to R10. So if that's approved in total, that would give them 20 acres of R10. And then what they would like to do is plat off a lot for a new home site. And so you can see the property is right off of Highway 71, south of Socks Center. It does have a, you can see again, a mixture of zoning in the area, from ag to commercial to industrial to residential. There is a classified tributary, a stream running through the property, and quite a bit of wetland and floodplain on the back eastern side of the property, but they don't intend to do anything there. The rezoning would just accommodate another building entitlement, the building site would actually go right along Highway 71 on the west side of the property would be their plan. They've already got a preliminary plat drafted in anticipation of hopefully having a favorable vote here. So anyway, you can see the area is a mixture of residential uses, there is some industrial use to the south, some commercial use, there's a golf course, so quite a mixture. If the rezoning is approved, it would give them, like I said, the one extra building entitlement. The comprehensive plan, future land use map, does have this in an ag/rural area. We did run the LEESA score, that's a land evaluation and site assessment, and that score from 0 to 100 came back at 32 for the five acres or six acres, which is quite low. Normally, if it's 65 or higher, we consider that pretty good for ag use, so of course, it makes sense that this was low. The township did review this and recommended approval of the rezoning, and that's all I have.
All right, very good, thanks, Jennifer.
Mr. Chair, just administrative question, just maybe to help us, Jennifer and Angie, maybe you know this, we're going from six ags to R10, what's the minimum that you can actually bring into an R10?
Good question, there isn't a minimum, so a property owner could ask for anything.
Okay, so I mean, it could be a one-acre lot, and you could still bring it into...
Somebody could request one acre be rezoned to R10, but it may not accomplish anything for them. So in this case, six acres would get them up to a full 20 acres in a R10, and that's how they would get two building entitlements.
Okay.
Yep.
So it would be a matter of how big a piece of property you want to use that entitlement on?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Mr. Chair, question. Jennifer, you wrote up a really interesting comment. So they're looking for the second building entitlement and they're thinking of putting the building on the west side of the property? So then, this area would not be leveled and built?
That's correct.
Interesting, okay, thank you.
Yep, that's correct.
That was very useful.
Good, all right.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, but I don't see a whole lot of room there. What's your plan, where you going to put it?
Hang on one second. Sean, we'll come back to your question, one second. I just want to let the applicants introduce themselves really quick for the record, if that's cool. So if you wouldn't mind just stating your name and then address for the record.
Vicki Pfeffer, 40062 US Highway 71, Sauk Center, Minnesota, 56378.
All right, thank you. Yeah, just in case you provide a comment.
Okay, Peter Erseth, 40062 US Highway 71.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so Sean, you have a question for the applicants.
Well, if we're building, you want to build on the highway there, I'm just curious about where you're going to put it.
Go ahead.
Okay, so there's a large shed there, so you see that second driveway going there?
To the south end.
So if you went out there, you saw the second...
Yeah, there's the two drives and that, and the big shed.
But we'd be in the second driveway and we would be to the east of that shed then, so closer to the back.
Oh, okay, down a little.
Yeah, we're off a little bit right now.
You would go a little farther, deeper into the lot than that other house? Yes.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Sure. If you are able to pull it back up, I can kind of, if you want me, I can point, get up there and actually point.
I can do this.
Yeah, it's down the southwest corner.
You can see the green shed, the green shed there.
Yeah, let him go up and point.
This screen.
Here, here we go.
That would go right here.
This is Vic's house right now with a shop. This is a storage shed. The house actually can fit right in here without disturbing getting close to this Getty Creek. I paced this off, measured it, and we also had...
Environmental.
Environmental Services overlooked at that, too. Hopefully that helps you, but it is buildable.
Thank you.
Yes. So that does meet setbacks and everything then?
Mr. Chair, yes. Great question. Like I said, they did have a preliminary plat drafted already. So on the east side there, you can see, yeah, this doesn't show up on that screen.
It actually was, Jen, for us. We could see it here, yeah.
It was, you could see it.
We can see that, yeah.
I can see where it's pointing. Oh, weird.
All right, we'll watch that one, too.
Okay, so current house, current house, current shed, and they would build somewhere in here. Our wetland staff did go out because you've got the creek, 100-foot setback from the creek. We've also got some wetland there, and there'll be a wetland setback. So the gray area is what the surveyor has determined needs setbacks.
See it. All right, very good. Okay, before maybe we go to any other questions from planning commission members, is there anything you want to add to Jennifer's staff report?
Well, the reason that we're actually doing this is because my daughter and son-in-law have been looking for homes in Sauk Center, but it's difficult because they're extremely expensive for not-nice houses. So then, I've always said, I love where I live, but I'm not totally in love with my house and at some point would want to downsize. Wasn't exactly planning right now, but it works. And so our idea is to do like a patio home there. And her husband's in the military and will be deployed again and stuff, and it'll just be nice to be close where...
And if you don't mind, the setback was absolutely in the mind, my mind, when we were laying this out, because it was a concern, but we do have room, especially when, was it Jen or Jennifer that came out? Yeah. So that was a relief. So there is actually room, even though it looks a little tight, there is room.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. Any other initial questions for staff or the applicants before we go into public hearing on this one? All right, with that, is there anyone here from the public on this item?
As long as I'm here, my show will speak again.
That's right, that's right.
John Basil, Chairman of Board, Sauk Center Township, live at 38171 Connegor 29. Mr. Chair and members, I don't know if I said that last time, but yeah, the township is in favor of this. The parcels to the north of that where the neighbors live did the exact same thing, built a house, and his daughter lives behind him there. This isn't going to change, just like the last property owners that was up here, isn't going to change a thing in the neighborhood there. The rest is all, it's zoned ag, but yeah, it's not farmed, whatever, so there's room to put a house in there. The dump to the south isn't going to bother anybody as long as they can live with the noise and stuff, whatever, so township was in favor of it. Thank you.
Thanks, John. All right, is there anyone else here from the public on this one? All right.
I move we close the public hearing.
Okay, motion by Sean.
Well, second.
Second by Rich. All those in favor of closing public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, public hearing closed. Any further discussion on this one before we go to finding a fact?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to ask a fundamental question because I don't think I have any problems with this myself, but I want to understand what's going on. I want to understand what's going on. So Angie, Jennifer, so the diagonal rectangle, the longer one there, we're adding the yellow piece onto it, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what's happening there?
Yep.
Yes, that's correct.
And then that will go then to plating, and then plating will go ahead and replat that so that two homes would be able to be placed on that property?
Yes, that's correct. If the rezoning's approved, it would be platted, yep. And this would be a minor plat, so the planning commission won't see it again because it only added one new building site, so that's a minor plat.
Okay, that's what I, okay, and I understand what's going on.
Good, all right, thanks. Anything else? All right. So number one, is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, I believe it's consistent because it doesn't offer any kind of conflict there, and there's a lot of, a lot of that going on there. It's basically just residential and continuing to be.
Yep, just an extension of some of the residential already there. Thank you, Sean. And number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county? List applicable sections.
Mr. Chair, if you look under living goals, goal number one, collaborate with cities and townships to maintain sustainable growth patterns that align with the comprehensive plan. Goal number three, support housing options that give people in all life stages and all economic means viable choices for safe, stable, and affordable homes.
Yeah, very good, Rich. Number three is the one that instantly came to mind, so thank you. Number three, is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, again, it's not in contrast to anything in the, in the area there.
Yeah, very good. Thanks, Sean. And then number four, has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied? I'm sorry, how has? I missed the how at the beginning.
Mr. Chair, well, they've certainly been proactive in asking the right questions and looking at setbacks and et cetera.
Met with environmental services, did a preliminary plat. Yep. Number five, are there any other issues pertinent to this matter?
Mr. Chair, just the fact that the township is recommending approval?
Yep. Thank you, Mike. Anything else on this one? I know some of the environmental concerns regarding the stream at Getty Creek were also addressed with setbacks and some of the pre-work, so that was good. All right, unless there's anything else, we'd be ready for a motion on this one.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to propose approval for this.
All right, motion made by Mike, thank you.
And I'll second.
Seconded by Rich. All right, so we'll do roll call. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, so motion to recommend approval will go to the county planning commissioners on August 8th, right, Jen? All right.
Correct.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with your project.
Before your time.
No, Mr. Chair, you don't need to attend.
Yeah, right. All right, agenda item number three, and that's to consider a rezoning request submitted by Francis and Elaine Funk of Sauk Center. According to section 4.1 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number 439, to rezone approximately 14.33 acres from the Ag 40 zoning district to the residential R5 zoning district. The property is in part of the northwest quarter of the southeast quarter, lying north of 442nd Street and east of 410th Avenue, section 33 of Sauk Center Township. Property address is 40786 442nd Street in Sauk Center, Minnesota. Quick roll call, you're already up, all right. Quick roll call of those members who were able to visit the site, starting with you, Jason.
Yes.
All right, I also was. Sean?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And Tara?
Yes.
Sorry, Joe, didn't mean to forget about you. Joe, how about you? All right, yes for Joe. All right, so with that, we'll go to staff report and then we'll come right back to you guys for your introductions. So Jennifer, why don't you take us through?
All right. Once again, we are in Sauk Center Township, and this property is 14.33 acres, currently zoned ag, it has a home on it. They're requesting to change it to R5, and if approved, that would allow them to have three building entitlements. They would plot that into three lots. It is on a township road, that's where access would come from. The property is, well, let me speak to the zoning quick. So it's surrounded by ag on three sides, and you can see it's got residential to the south across the township road there. So it is adjacent to existing R5. The property is about 60% tillable, about 40% woodland where the home is located. When we look out about a half mile, there's about 73 homes and one registered feedlot, but that's a pretty small one, it has less than 10 animal units. And on the Future Land Use map, this also is in an ag/rural designation on the Future Land Use map. The LEASAS score for this one was 74.65, so that did go above our threshold of 65, indicating it's considered, according to our system, scoring system, good for agricultural use. The soils scored 48 out of 50, so that was a very high score for the soils. And then the site assessment component was 25 out of 50, so that was about a midway score, and I think it lost points because there are so many homes in the area. So that's the LEASAS score. Again, the township did review this and recommended approval of the rezoning. And that's all I have.
All right, very good. So now, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record.
Fran Funk, 40786 442 St., Sauk Center, Minnesota.
Elaine Funk, 40786 442nd St., Sauk Center, Minnesota, 56378.
All right, thank you. Anything you want to add to Jennifer's report?
Very interesting to hear the soil because we, we've done some farming on it and...
Sand.
Very sandy, so. Just the purpose behind rezoning is allowing our daughter to purchase the farm site. It's, we've raised six children in that home, it's very big, and we would like to build a patio home or possibly a shell, and also allow our son to use the other parcel to come back into the community and build a home as well.
All right, very good. Extending the family, family tradition, it sounds like.
Mr. Chair, Angie Berg, one thing I would add on the LEASAS score, just to, for Funk's benefit and the planning commission, so the LEASAS, or the LE, the land evaluation score, assumes that the soil is irrigated. Okay, so when you, it, I know it's not irrigated, I'm saying that the whole system is built upon the fact that it's irrigated, so I don't know if we've had that discussion lately, but that's likely why it's got worked so high.
No, I'm glad you mentioned, I'm glad you mentioned that, and that does make a huge difference if you're on sandy soils.
Yeah, so that's been a subject of debate maybe a decade ago, but not lately, so...
Right, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, so what, what impact would that have on that LEASAS score if we took that into account then?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I can take a stab at that. So the LEASAS scoring assumes the soils are irrigated, so if those sandy soils have irrigation input, they're going to be a lot more productive. So that's why the scores are higher for those sandy soils. And we have this comment very often from folks who don't irrigate their land and they say it's not great farmland. Well, the system was developed assuming there was irrigation, so therefore they get a higher score.
Okay, I'm going to acknowledge I'm not an ag expert, but I've, I know some people that are ag insurance folks, so they were a little bit more experts. And I do know that often sandy soil, if it's irrigated, it's preferred because from a crop insurance perspective, they lose far less crops to drought than they do to flooding if you look across the masses. So again, it makes a huge difference if, if it's irrigated or not. If it's not irrigated, sandy soil is pretty tough.
Mr. Chair, can I have a question for staff?
Yes.
The LEASAS score that you have on there, is that, is that just a point of consideration or is that something that we have to take into account?
Great question. That is a point of consideration.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, but when we're looking at this, this plot, then, that actual open space that would be considered farmland is only about eight, nine acres of the, okay.
All right, any other questions?
I'd just like to make the comment that I'm, I've only lived a quarter mile away and, and I have the same soil and it's not farmland. It's, if you irrigate it, it'd be great farmland or vineyard or garden or something, but it's very granular.
Like a lot of the rest of the Sauk River, Sauk District or watershed, a lot of sand. Good, thanks, Mike. Anything else? Any other questions for the applicant source, staff on this one before we go to public hearing? All right, with that, we'll go to public hearing. John, you want to come up? I like it. Since you're here, right?
A busy night.
We're going to bet you a check for tonight.
Their money's worth, that's all. Mr. Chair members, I'm John Basil, Sauk Center Township, chairman of the board, whatever, but I can tell you all about that land, it's pretty basic, get rid of that stupid LEASAS score, it's piss-poor farmland. That's all you need to know. I've cut grain on the R5 just to the south of that for the guy that farmed it, yeah, it's useless. You're not going to stick $150,000 irrigation system on that eight acres and think you're going to make money on that, whatever. So when we looked at it, yeah, it's piss-poor farm ground. I'm not sure where the feedlot was on that, Jennifer, what, within a half mile or whatever. I can't think of it offhand, but that whole 40, 60 acres to the south of that is R5 that may, or may not ever get developed because the cost of developing is so high, you'd have to throw in roads there, too. So it totally depends on who owns the land, and we like to help the landowners out in every situation, just like the first two hearings you held, that whoever owns the land, they're the present owner, if we can help them out, do what they want to do with the land. There is two houses just to the north of... There is two houses just to the north of their, that property line. A house to the south of that property line. And like I say, all the land around it is totally useless for farming, although, you know, that bigger parcel, I suppose someday, if you had enough money, you could put an irrigator on there, but that's got nothing to do with this either. So, yeah. Basically, if they want to put a couple houses on there, you're not taking good farmland out of production to do that. And so that's kind of what we looked at it as. Any other questions? I can sure answer them for you, because I'll tell you the truth.
Mr. Chair, just a question for John. So if we put two more houses up here, that's a dirt road that's leading out there. Four more one-way trips per day, so you have minor increase in traffic. No concern from the township for that?
No, you got to understand, our township, we surround Sauk Center, city of Sauk Center. We get way too much traffic already on our township roads. If you go to the what is it, north a quarter mile, take a left and go a half mile to the west there. We chloride that part of the road up to County Road 17 to help that Elden Hiddle on the corner, because that is kind of a haul road for a gravel pit to the west of there on the township road, which we chloride also and stuff. And right where their house, present house ends now, it's tar from there up to Highway 71 and stuff, so if in the future, if they want to tar that all the way up to the corner there, they could sure pay for that, and the township would maintain it then as a tar road, whatever. So, yeah, the traffic issue isn't a major concern, because like I say, there's, everybody avoids the city of Sauk Center as much as possible, and they go around that anyhow, and they use the township roads to do that, so.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, two or four more trips a day ain't going to matter.
Good. All right, thanks, John, appreciate it.
Before you leave, John, do you chloride for residents upon request?
No, we do certain specific roads, because like I say, where our township is located, if specific residents want it done, we turn them over to our road grader crew that does their chloriding, and they come out and do theirs and pay them specifically to them. We have on the other side, well, where that, that first one was, where a half mile to the east of there on Highway 28, it goes to the gravel pits in Todd County to a mile, two miles to the north of that. So when you cross, come off County Road 20, Stearns County Road 24, across Highway 28, that's a township gravel road. We chloride that, because it gets the piss pounded out of it, because of the gravel trucks that drive on, on there and stuff. So there is that road and another road that, in order to save the road, the township does chloride them. But otherwise, if it's specific for individuals, they can contact us, and we put them in touch with our road crew to have them pay for it in that way and stuff. So we try to, we try to stay out of that personal stuff, whatever, so.
Hey, thanks, John, appreciate you being here tonight. All right, any, actually, anyone else here from the public on this one? All right, didn't really think so. So motion, anyone?
Some vote, Jason Wineman, some vote.
Jason, second?
Second.
By Rich, all right, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Public hearing closed. Any additional discussion on this one before we go to finding a fact? All right, hearing nothing. So number one, is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, as this future land use is rural residential, it is consistent with the ordinance on the plan?
All right, thank you, Jason. All right, number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county list applicable sections?
Mr. Chair, under living goals, number one, collaborate with cities and townships to maintain sustainable growth patterns that align with the comprehensive plan. And number two, manage the impacts of growth and development on the county's rural character and natural resources.
That's good. Do you want to throw three in there, too?
Number three?
Yeah. Anyway, no, it's, it's good, we're good with the first two, there's a couple others that might apply. Number three, is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, I think the proposal's compatible with the existing neighborhood, it being houses all the way around.
Very good, thanks, Tara. Four, how is the applicant demonstrated the standards and criteria stated, and the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, the voice, the proposed uses of those parcels.
Yeah, worked with the township as well, ahead of time, so agreed, very good. And then five, any other issues pertinent to this matter?
Chair, just the fact that the township was in approval of the plan.
And Mr. Chair, I'd like to add on to that, it was great to have you folks here to provide context and clarity, there was some very interesting conversation.
Yeah, good, thank you. Anything else on this one? If not, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Rich, second by Mike, to recommend approval. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion recommend approval will go. Hey, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Build a lot, you can build a ball field. Just got to irrigate it.
There you go. All right, so that takes us to agenda item number four. And that is to consider rezoning request submitted by Leslie and Deborah Willey. Wilder, Willey? Good. St. Cloud, Minnesota, according to section 4.1 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance, 439, to rezone approximately 10 acres from the A40 zoning district to the R10 zoning district. Property is part of the southeast quarter, southwest quarter, lying north of 260th Street and section 33 of St. Joseph Township, not Sauk Center Township. The property address is 26052 County Road 139, St. Cloud, Minnesota. All right, real quick roll call of members who visited, we'll start with you, Jason.
Yes.
I was also a yes, how about Sean?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And Tara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
All right. With that, we'll have you guys do your introductions here in a second, but we'll have Jennifer quick do the staff report.
Very good. St. Joe Township, this property is 30 acres. It has a home. They have the desire to have one more home site there, so they are asking for 10 acres of it to be rezoned to R10. And if approved, then they would do a plat to get that 10 acre split off. So the property, it's interesting, their address is County Road 139, but the actual road there is 260th Street that their driveway comes off of, and the new home, if approved, would come off of 260th Street. And the property is completely wooded. It does have quite a bit of slope, the southern part of the property is higher, and then it slopes down kind of to the north, northwest, about 50 feet. Some low land there. There are about 45 homes within a half mile radius of this property, and one registered feedlot that has less than 10 animal units. The zoning is completely AIG 40, they're actually on the township, or, they're on the township line. To the south of them is the city of Rockville. And the city of Rockville, that land is also zoned agricultural 40. And if approved, then they would get the one extra building entitlement. As with the other two, the previous two requests, we had the comprehensive plan, future land use map, has this as AIG slash rural area, as you can see there. The yellow, and then it's actually overlaid with a lot of green, and that's the natural resource overlay on top of the AIG rural area designation. The LEASAS score for this one was 51.3. The soils came in at 29, and then the site assessment, 21. St. Joe Township did recommend approval of the rezoning. And that's all I have.
All right, very good. Would, if you mind, just stating name and address for record?
Willey, and I live at 26052 County Road 139, St. Cloud, Minnesota.
And Les Willey, 26052 County Road 139.
All right, very good, thanks. Anything you want to add to Jennifer's report?
We're just, we're asking to split this off, it's kind of future planning for us, we're getting to retirement age, and we're kind of ready to downsize, and it's just future planning. We may keep it just as property for our future, or we may build back there, we don't know.
All right, very good. Any questions by planning commission members for the applicants or for staff on this one?
Mr. Chair, just a quick follow-up question to the applicant, so this is future planning, you don't have a preliminary plat submitted or anything, it's just?
No, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just a quick question, and then the 260th, that is maintained by St. Joe Township?
No, that is, that's our road, we own that whole road.
It's, they say it's a township, or you're saying that it is, and it's an easement for?
Yeah.
I think I saw the painted speed limit sign.
Yeah. That's ours.
Yeah, and I was wondering who from the township painted that, but.
That's what's weird, is the, the two houses on the far end have 260th address, but there's no 260 that makes it to them, that's actually a private road that comes in.
It's an easement, owned to that.
Okay.
Is that, is that speed limit sign I remember, that slowed Jeannie down from driving in there too fast?
It doesn't slow anybody down. The folks on the end used to have teenagers.
So then, just to clarify, so then it's a private drive, but, and is it maintained by all the properties, is in joint ownership?
Right.
Yeah, depending who's around.
Mr. Chair, could I comment on that? That's actually good to know, it's a private driveway, and so then the reason it's named is the the county's addressing policy states if you have three or more homes off of one driveway, then they assign a name to it. So that's why it would be named, but it sounds like it's private, so that makes sense.
Very good, thanks for the clarification there. Good question. Anyone else on this one?
Now I know where my GPS was confused.
Yep. Used to speed, break the speed limit on that road on my bicycle, so. Trying to get away from deer flies, though.
Yeah, right?
Okay, well, with that, I don't see anyone here from the public on this one, so I'd take a motion.
I'll make the motion and we'll close the public hearing.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tara. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, so motion to close public hearing, it's through. Any, any other discussion by anyone or questions on this one before we go to finding a fact?
Mr. Chair, just a question for staff. One of the living goals talks about design for number four, encourage new homes to be constructed in a sustainable manner, well, including energy efficiency in accordance with state building codes. And then also respecting archaeological and cultural history. How does that become evaluated during the plat process? Or does it?
Mr. Chair, I might be able to answer that. Don't we have identified areas that are significant and already identified throughout the county? So then if, if there would be a development coming into that area, then we would, you know, have to get special permission, or at least make that aware that that's an archaeological site? Don't we have those, I think we have those maps from the state of Minnesota?
Right, the state has yeah, archaeological sites mapped, and we also have a list of architectural, the Minnesota, it's a registry. Significant architectural, yeah. So those, that's a good question, those are, those are on our checklist of items we reviewed during plats, it doesn't come up often at all, but.
Because I mean, it's a beautiful forest and plot.
Sure.
So if that is plat in the future, will we, is the platting process sensitive to the ecological existing condition?
That's correct, yep.
Okay. Yeah.
So yeah, it's, it's both situations where.
Yeah.
Okay.
Into the mic, but it's not on.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Sorry, I was just blabbing about, for the public's purpose, that we can add a condition related to oak wilt, and not allow tree removal during the oak wilt periods of concern.
You see a lot of that around the metro area, when I was working down there, it's.
Good, thanks, Jason.
I mean, the only reason is if you look to the west, there's that sort of open site to the west, northwest. And I understand it's there, and it's a home site, and seeing another one of those pop up would be heartbreaking for some of us. So just
Yep.
Point of interest.
It's a good question, Jason.
Chair, I was just going to respond to Jason. Jason, although that's a good point about the archaeological sites, you know, we don't have everything identified either.
I know.
And so when a new home comes in, it could very well be in a place like that, and that opens up a whole new world for, you know, that site, so.
All right, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this one? Before we go to finding a fact? All right, hearing none. We'll go to number one, is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, did you close the public hearing?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, great.
I made a motion to close, and I had my mic on.
Yep, and Tara seconded.
Okay, sorry about that.
I was trying to second, but I couldn't. I've been
Thanks.
Third, second, like all night.
Appreciate, appreciate you being there, though, Sean. I just appreciate I didn't have to drive 300 miles for the site visits.
No doubt.
None of you guys stopped to have a beer?
Next time, thanks for the invite, Mike.
Okay, so.
So is this consistent with, oh yeah, sorry, Sean.
I do want to say, I, I'm a, I kind of don't like the fact that it's a little bit of spot zoning here, but the ultimate outcome is the fact that it's not really going to change anything, it's going to fit in, in the neighborhood. So it's
Yeah.
We're just adding one housing unit availability, basically, is.
Yep, it's, it's not currently AIG land, it's a big woods.
It does break my heart, though, when you see the, these pieces getting broke up, and then the woods gone. I know I have chainsaw, will travel, but boy, every time you cut down a beautiful tree, it kind of, it's gone.
And Mr. Chair, just, you know, we have the rural residential standard that encourages clustering development to preserve existing natural resources. So that is part of the standard.
Yep.
We do want to encourage preservation of the resources.
Right, but like we said, they can do what they want, we just hope they don't. Right? And we hope they're good people, and that, you know, yeah.
The way I look at it, and it's a good point, because I mean, I like forests, I think the forest has a lot better chances standing as a residential zone than it does AIG. If it's AIG, I'm clear cutting that sucker and planting corn. And I've seen that done quite a bit as you head north of. And I've seen that done quite a bit as you head north of this area, so, um, it's just one of those deals. Good, good discussion on number one. Um, number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county listed applicable sections?
Mr. Chair.
There you go.
We have a couple of living goals to read on.
Like, three of them, maybe?
Yeah, number one, two, and three in the living goals, but also I would like to add, under rural residential policies, uh, number three, residential uses in the agricultural areas must embrace the comprehensive plans' future land use factors to minimize conflicts between adjacent land uses and natural resources, and I think this fits.
God, you were on your game tonight, Rich. I'm just gonna put that on the record, all right? You've been all over this stuff and I appreciate that. All right, number three, is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, I believe it is. Um, we have a couple of residential units up and down the driveway. Um, so we would just be adding one more. Hopefully that remains consistent with the presence and attitude of the neighborhood.
Yeah. Well stated, thanks, Jason. Number four, how has the applicant demonstrated the standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, I guess they didn't?
Yeah, there wasn't a lot of discussion on that, this is really kind of a preliminary, it doesn't sound like there's a lot of plans on this one yet, so we can state that there, it was, really wasn't discussed.
Yeah.
Are there any other issues pertinent to this matter?
Uh, Mr. Chair, so the St. Joseph Township recommended approval of the rezoning request. And the planning commission had a lot of discussion around the preservation of the forest resources. So, we have recognized the value of the existing resource.
Very good. Well stated, thanks, Jason. Anything else on issues pertinent to this matter? Otherwise a motion would be in order.
Um, actually, just slightly out of order, one question for the applicant. So it's a driveway, right?
Yeah.
That, that road there?
Yeah.
If and when you build a new parcel, does that landowner have to buy into the maintenance of the driveway, how does that?
There's no agreement, it's, it's very informal.
Okay, thank you.
And we've been there twenty-one years and it's worked, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Jason, Jennifer, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's part of the plating process too, right? I mean, we would require that they do record an easement.
Yes.
And it would have to address maintenance and all the things. I mean, this was originally developed back before we had any zoning and so things, they're all just little meets and bounds parcels and none of that was looked at, but now if they subdivide, then we, they have to make sure all that's documented, recorded, so we work with them on that.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Chair. Angie, how do we guarantee that, uh, emergency vehicles are able to access those, does the township have, who, who, who makes sure that that's?
I would say there is no guarantee. There is no guarantee with any development that we see. With the exception of, I would say, maybe a, a new residential or commercial plat that has a newly built road with correct turnarounds and, and the like, but in the situation, they wouldn't be required to build a surface, therefore, they wouldn't be required to meet any minimum standard for emergency services.
Okay, but it, when do you get a nine-one-one number, is that when you get the billing permit?
They could get one now if they wanted.
On the parcel?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right. We're still probably ready for, uh, motion.
All.
Or recommendation, I should say.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the request.
All right, motion by Rich?
Mr. Chair, I wanna second that.
First way to jump on that. Motion by Rich, second by Sean to recommend approval. Um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, so motion to recommend approval, we'll go to the county commissioners on their meeting.
August eighth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Why, I, we, we agree with you about keeping it beautiful.
It's very nice. Just for your own information, forty-three years ago, I walked that land looking to buy, looking to buy, and but the hangup was getting access off the.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah.
And you said you've been there twenty-one years?
Yeah.
Okay.
Was three-tens there.
Yep.
And you can actually see where the tree tins post all our still area.
They built the house in the middle of.
Oh, it was beautiful. Contiguous.
I was just making sure you weren't there when I used to be biking up and down that road. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so that takes us to, uh, the minutes from the last meeting. Does anyone have any changes or modifications or corrections they see to those minutes? Otherwise a motion would be in order.
Jason Wienerman, so move.
Second.
Motion by Jason, second by Rich, recommend approval of the minutes from last month's meeting, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And it's approved. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I have a quick update, um, I'm not so good at updating the planning commission after the county board meetings since Jeff Bertram's no longer on the planning commission. He doesn't remind me, so mind me, but what the county planning, what the board did for the Channel Marine rezoning, that was in front of you last month, and the shoreline alteration permit, uh, they scheduled public hearings for both of those. And so those will be held with these items tonight on August eighth. There'll be the public hearings for the shoreline alteration, the contractor's license, and then the Channel Marine. So my apologies for not updating you earlier on that. And then I did sign all of you, well, Deb, I'm not gonna take credit, Deb signed you all up for the emails on updating for the accessory structures, that whole talk. Uh, Jason Wienerman was in attendance, Mike couldn't get there due to some work conflicts. So we're kind of in a bands until fall. And then we might not do anything, so just hang out on that issue and we'll bring that back when it's time.
Okay, very good, thanks, Angie. Hey, Joe, you're bringing comments back, um, I was just gonna throw this out on our first agenda item, Kathleen Oswald's. I'm, I'm personally in favor of whatever you guys do for her, I, I'd be okay if we rezoned it, I just, my vote on denial is entirely based on, on principle. Um, yeah, it, it's, I think, a dangerous thing if, if you start having a larger part of government superseding small, lower levels of government. Because unintended consequences, and I, I don't know if John was quite there on that one, but, I mean, now what prevents people from buying a couple of their parcels and coming back? Jason, I was glad you brought that up because that's the, that's the other side of it. So anyway, for her, though, I hope she gets her, I, I'm with Tara in, in spirit in that I hope her, she gets her, her thing approved, so. For what it's worth.
From us?
Not from us, I, I know.
That's why I was wishy-washy last time and I was still wishy-washy up until we voted, but.
It's a tough one.
Mike let me off the hook.
No, yeah, I'm glad you guys spoke up on that too and, and voted the way you did and it's.
This is that transitional area, again, that we're, we're, we were doing the twenty-forty study. What's gonna be the big one?
In the adjoining landlord, uh, Cindy Triscoe, I had, uh, discussions with her and she was all for it and, and thought that that, it should've, it should be a no-brainer just to put it back. To the original.
But when you start looking at the the maps and you see how things have, what's zoned what?
And Tara and I have said this before, you know, we, we shouldn't be following like sheep. You know, if you've got an opinion and you wanna go against the grain, go against the grain.
Yeah.
Because I take that into consideration too, because it makes something of awareness that somebody else might not catch, and then all of a sudden the mi- the mind change says, oh yeah, we didn't think about that.
Because to me, it wasn't, it wasn't spot zoning, it's, it's, that got, that got put into our ones along that road just because it was along a road across the road from the lake. And this piece should've stayed with the, the rest of it and, and by happenstance, it didn't because of that one little piece didn't meet the setbacks or whatever, and I think we should honor it and, and fix the wrong.
Yeah. And that was the same thing with the question on the lease score, I didn't know that it, it was assumed that lease score would go up under irrigation.
Yeah.
Because that, that didn't look like that'd go to soil.
Oh, well, it is.
How the heck would that be?
John was honest about it, that was, that was.
Yeah, okay, yeah, the way we put it, it's okay.
That was honest?
And then Tara, what you're saying that, does, is that just a recommendation, what? And as you find out, is, we all have individual differences as far as what we're willing to die on our sword on. And some of us are more sensitive to shoreline and some thinks about individual rights and things like that, so, yeah, and, and that's fine. And, and that's the way the county is.
I would like to make a motion, we adjourn.
Yep, thanks, Rich, second.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Rich, second by Tara to close the meeting, alls in favor say aye?
Aye. That's the fun part of the night, smacking.